The guys were intimidated, they just assumed she had a college boyfriend or something.
Yep.
We had, in our day, we had a guy intimidated story too. Seven o'clock, so all teams, Dina, okay, play for Ohio State.
Yeah.
Player corrupts, his girlfriend's name was Linda Shawn. And that's where the house got so popular, they said, "Please don't squeeze me."
See that? That's what I thought of.
Steve McAdams was a Green Hills grad.
Yeah.
Green Hill, yeah, yeah.
Wayland sixty-six.
Center, center, why do you center it with the whole thing?
Line back.
Why back?
That is some funny.
Line back and running door.
Really good.
Everybody played two, played all positions.
Yeah, there were no specialists back in the sixties.
I played every minute of the day.
Seven o'clock.
Do you have a table?
Okay, I think it's seven o'clock, let's call the meeting into order. Yvonne, do you want to go ahead?
Let's do the roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
I'll do the roll call.
Thank you.
Mr. Treese?
I am here.
Mr. Noel?
I'm here.
Anyone hard?
Here.
Mr. Merle?
I am here too.
All right.
Yvonne, do you want to go ahead with the staff request?
Yes, in the way of summary, this regards twenty-one Joywood Drive from J. Melinda, Mass. And the request is to construct an eight-foot by twelve-foot accessory structure in Greenbelt District. Subject property is located, the very last lot on the southeast side of Joywood Lane. The relevant section of the code is the Greenbelt, which states that no land, any Greenbelt District, no land shall be used, and no building or other structure shall be erected or altered to be used in whole or in part unless otherwise provided for, except for the following purposes: public park reservation and playgrounds, public recreational buildings, allotment gardens, farms, nurseries and gardens, public utilities, bus passenger stations, and signs erected by the public authority. Specifically related to the planning commission approval required, in a Greenbelt District, no land shall be used, and no building or other structure shall be erected or altered to be used in whole or in part for permitted uses, except after plans for the proposed use, building or other structure, and the location you're often submitted to the planning commission for their recommendation.
So that's why it's before, as of sixty?
Correct. In the way of some background for it, that property, twenty-one Joywood, was built in nineteen sixty. At that time, a corner of the house in the driveway, if you refer to Exhibit A, we see that a portion of that were, were built on the property that was saying it was Greenbelt. In two thousand nine, the applicant consolidated two lots, which included an R1 lot and a Greenbelt lot. In May of two thousand eleven, the applicant had a contractor require if they could construct a thirty-by-forty-foot pole barn on the Greenbelt property, and that was denied. In December of two thousand eleven, the applicant asked to construct a garage in a Greenbelt area. At that time, it was explained that no construction, other than that, which I already read, that was allowed according to the code, would be permitted. Since that time, a driveway plan was put in the Greenbelt District without authorization. None of the requests had come forward to be submitted to the planning commission. The applicant is formally requesting planning commission review of the eight-by-twelve shed to be placed on a Greenbelt. They've stated a previous shed was located in that Greenbelt area, and are asking for one of two locations for the shed to be approved. They, and that is indicated also in that same survey, you'll see the different locations there. Although the proposed use does not appear as though it would be detrimental to the adjacent property owners, the property is owned, the Greenbelt, and do considerations should be given to any questions this could set in the future for Greenbelt property. That concludes my report.
Would the Mass like to give us that information as to why this, is it what you want to do, other than what you've already presented, is there anything?
I, I would like to add just a couple of points. The, the driveway that we put in was because we had read the zoning that said you couldn't park an RV on gravel, and what was there when we moved there was gravel. So we concreted it. And we were misled by our construction crew, because they thought that replacement, concrete, replacement of driveways didn't require a permit. So I wanted to explain that to start with. And then the second thing is, the structure that was there, we just removed the last of the foundation of it this, this spring. So we do need something to put our lawnmower, snow blower, generator, because we lose power there all the time. You know, those kinds of things, we need something to put them in. The other thing is, we've polled our neighbors. I know you sent something to them to ask them, some of them have appeared here with us, others have sent notes. One had to go to a funeral, but there's only six houses on the street, so. One sent a note, one has appeared in person, one asked us to convey that he could have come, but he's at a funeral, to say that they have no objections at all to us putting a shed back in the woods there, you know, that wouldn't bother them at all. And that's it.
This area, if I may, this area is the back of the, of the lot, of the R1 lot, has a precipitous drop from the driveway down to the creek to the.
That being the very back?
The very.
If you went out your back door, just keep going back towards your lot.
If you went down the back door of our house, you wouldn't have many steps before you'd be in the.
Right, got it, yep, okay, I just want to make sure.
There's no other level ground, unless you want us to put it in the front yard.
Right now, right now, we have the items that we want to shelter chained to trees in this area. And it looks like, it looks, it looks bad.
It's like a nice neat shed.
I would like to replace that, that look with a clean look of a shed. As you can see, majority of the property that we own, we can't use. Do you have a copy of the?
Yeah, thank you.
Over sixty, over, well, actually, over seventy percent of usable ground, we can't use. And the house in the front yard is on the other part.
The other thing I forgot to mention is, and Yvonne didn't mention when she was, was giving the background, is the last several feet of Joywood Drive are also on our, our lot. So you can see by the survey that the, the street was built into the Greenbelt lot. So I think it's, there's a lot of evidence that the village hasn't treated it like it was, you know, couldn't be used at all for the last forty or fifty years.
The original plot showed the Joywood going.
The street was supposed to go on through.
Go on through.
To.
Around to Justitia, actually.
They were going to loop it around to Justitia. But they, but they never did that, so the street actually impedes onto the Greenbelt lot by several feet.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. The shed that was there previously, any idea who put that there, how long?
Mr. Graham Gardner, they lived in the house for, how many years?
He was there for years, like.
They were there before we were, back in seventy-one, so.
And that's who we bought it from, forty years ago, so it was there.
So prior owner, and it's been there at least forty years?
Yes.
The owner, as far as I know.
And that's not there, it's gone.
Right, right. Yeah, because I had seen in the, in the staff notes that we had gotten, that, you know, was a, you know, a replacement, essentially, and I'm thinking, okay, how long was the other one there?
Yeah, we put it in the same spot if we wanted to, but it's going to be more visible from the street than if we put it a little further back. We do have a letter from Yvonne that, that we're going to be able to cut the weeds and the bushes and stuff in front of that lot at the end of the street, and put grass in and make a nice little park-like area, like at the end of Justitia, but specifically for the folks on our street to have a place to gather. So that's, that's the plan, and we didn't really want to put the shed right there, where, if we cut that brush down, you'll see it. But that's where it was, like straight at the end of the street.
Well, I, I read everything here, and the violations of the whole use of the lot went back to the original construction.
Yes ma'am.
They should have never been allowed to leave the foundation where it was. And then it's been a continuous violation. And it doesn't matter if there was a shed there forty years ago or not, that doesn't mean that we should approve another structure because of the precedents that it sets, that's my opinion. Because if we allow any structures outside of the designated structures or public utilities, which I think you would consider a street a public utility, for the public use, but I don't, I don't see how it could not be a violation, no matter. And the driveway that was put in is definitely, I mean, it's, it's like a private camping spot in the woods, and if I lived there, I would want it too. But again, it's the precedent issue that I have a problem with, in reading everything that I've read.
Our entire driveway is on the Greenbelt.
I know.
Our entire driveway.
I know.
That's been there since nineteen sixty.
I know, except for some additional newer pieces, which also went on Greenbelt.
Well, no, those were purely replacement, just the one little thing.
But they were replaced onto the existing.
The one little thing in the woods was where the gravel was.
Yeah. I don't know, I have a problem with it from a precedent standpoint, and I'm thinking that you should look at maybe putting the shed on a piece of the driveway in the back.
That's a Greenbelt lot.
It's a Greenbelt, I'm sorry.
It's the same lot.
It's already on the.
It's already paved, well, that's true too, I guess, unless you tear the whole thing out, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Including ten, ten inches of, of the garage.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, I know, it was originally in violation. I don't know how the surveyor and how the contractor got by with it.
Well, things were a little lax in nineteen sixty around here, we already lived here then, I remember, you know, it was, it was a different world when we lived in Green Hills than what it is today. And a better one, I have to have.
My, my question is, also, this portion of, of Green Hills, and this property is bordered by thirty-two point six acres of Winton Woods. And the purpose of a Greenbelt is to maintain some type of barrier between civilization, or at least a wooded area in between the two, what's the purpose of the Greenbelt?
Well, I'm not sure what the thinking was at the time that it was designated.
What's your thinking of it?
My thinking is, is to put a line between the residential properties and protecting the woods, that is my thinking.
What if we gave you ten feet of the property, deeded over to the, to the village? Ten feet of that property, and we just move the line back, because obviously, the line, we've been, we've been living for fifty years with a, a line that's in violation. We give you the last ten feet, which is basically what you have on Judeale, ten feet between the Park Road and, and Judeale Backyards. And you could look on the map where it was longer, it was wider, and it was moved closer to the Park Road, giving the people in, on Judeale a backyard, shows it clearly on the map.
But they're not allowed to use it for structures.
But it's like eight feet wide, it's a row of weeds.
I know, I, I know.
And some of them, and some of those are zoned R1. So there, our Greenbelt is not intact, there are places where several contiguous formerly Greenbelt lots are now zoned R1. So all, all we're asking is, all we're trying to do is put a shed in our yard.
I've got a half acre here that I can't use.
But you.
Why was it ever sold to me?
The only, when you bought the property, you knew that this property. Well, you should have done due diligence in finding out about the Greenbelt. I know, when I did construction, I was required to put a fence between the property line and Winton Woods, I did that without a problem. And any new construction, any new neighborhoods that have restrictions, they may not, they may own the lot, but they are not allowed to do certain things on that lot, or in the green space areas of those lots, it's common today. So my only issue with it, if I were you, and I lived there, I would feel like I wanted to do all that stuff too, but I honestly, it, it is a concern because of the precedents that it sets.
What precedents?
There aren't that many more half acre Greenbelt lots that are privately owned, that people are paying lots of taxes on. You know, it's like, when, when we moved here, the Greenbelt was owned by the village, and when the village needed money, they started selling them off. And it's, I, I just don't think that we need a half acre between us and thirty-two acres of Winton Woods.
Yeah.
When there's, there's no one there, it doesn't touch another person's lot.
I, I totally understand where you're coming from, but based on what it's saying in our guidelines, unless we go back and change our regulations, it's not permitted, and there's no good reason for it.
Can I ask you your interpretation, then, of what I read and what you read out loud today, Yvonne? It says it can be a community garden, or it can be a farm, or a nursery, or a garden. So can I mow all those trees down and plant corn? I mean, that's what it means, isn't it?
You can't take the trees without a permit.
Well, I have a permit to clear the lot for grass, but I mean, seriously, if I had asked for that, is it one of the purposes of it, for farming and gardens, and that's what it says?
Yeah.
I mean, when you go back to when this, when what we studied in high school about why this village was formed, you know, since we went, since we went to Green Hills High, it, you know, it was, it was a place for workers to live near the farms where they worked, and to have their own little plots of land to farm, and to not live in the city, but to be surrounded by beautiful trees. Well, we are surrounded by beautiful trees, and, and I, I fully support the Greenbelt concept of let's keep green around us, but I think that was really intended, after the park was established, to mostly be Winton Woods. We are in part of the park.
Well, you know, that, that's not completely true.
What do you mean? In what way?
Because there's a lot of Greenbelt land that is part of the village, that is not part of the park.
Yes, that's true.
The intention of that is to provide a buffer, all right?
That is true, there's, there's Greenbelt land in the park.
Give me a chance here, would you please? You know, I, I look at your particular location, the area you're talking about putting this shed up butts directly to the east, I guess that'd be, to basically be the beach woods, the field road forest back there. You know, personally, I don't see a problem or particularly bad precedent by allowing you to have this shed, and that is my opinion. It's not going to be particularly, you know, obvious place. It'll certainly meet your needs as far as being able to, you know, take care of your equipment, and still be able to use your garage for cars, unfortunately, something I've never been able to do.
We haven't been able to sneak one in there yet, we moved from a much larger house.
Two-car positive precedent.
Yeah.
But we're working on it.
I know how that goes, so. You know, it's as far as, you know, I, I don't see why, where allowing this shed would be contravening the spirit of the Greenbelt, given the fact that there's really, as you pointed out, big pile of woods between you and Lake Forest Circle.
We certainly support the concept of Greenbelt staying green, I mean, we, we really truly do. Even the forest management is an issue, we have a lot of tree fall in that old forest, you know, and, and we don't know what we're allowed to manage and what we're not allowed to manage, we don't know what we have to cut up and what we're not allowed to touch.
There's a lot of old growth that has been blown over each year.
We've lost.
Drive back along the Park Road and see all the beech trees that are down, and I've had three or four fall this year.
We've lost about fifty since we've been here in four years.
I've got a couple of questions. Is, is your intention to have any electric or plumbing to the shed?
No plumbing, I wouldn't have electric so that I could charge my battery in the, in the.
For the lawnmower.
In the lawnmower.
And, and what's your intention on how that electric's run out there, is that underground?
It'll be underground.
I wish I knew every lot in Green Hills, but I certainly don't, and I'm not asking you to, Yvonne. Do we have other places where there are sheds? I mean, I don't know the total number of lots that back up to Greenbelt, but it's a substantial number. Do we have other sheds that are outside of Chapter Sixteen?
We have actual structures that are not in the Greenbelt, have been put in. Since I have been in Green Hills, this is forty, fifty, sixty years ago, it was put there in that, in the recent, going in time.
And when you say it's not recent, since you moved to Green Hills?
Those, are we talking structures beyond kids' tree forts?
Yes, yes. We are talking structures, building, small buildings.
Approved.
We've got pieces of buildings, houses that have been, have belonged to, have been to the good, from what I understand, this was done in when it was the good old Buddy Woods, is what I refer to as.
Well, however we end up deciding, I respect the Mass for coming here and doing the process correctly.
Well.
And obviously.
It's the same way with me, you know, I'm coming in here, and that basis, but I can also see some of their problems, and, you know, from that basis, but again, if we're going to do it, then we need to do it all the way through. In other words, we don't want to come and come in here and somebody wants to put a pole barn over here on the backside of, down toward the lake, that's still in Green Hills, and, you know.
We can't, we can't.
And then the other thing is, the permissions that is in this needs to be put up, what is a garden and what is not a garden.
Well, I, I totally agree with that.
Charter will allow you to amend that section without a court of duty.
It does need to be a little more clarity.
Remember during the zoning code, we initially thought we'd rewrite it, but the charter prohibits us from doing that.
That's right.
Unless it is.
It's good, it's got its good game.
I'll leave that for the next administration.
That, that is a good point, though, it does need to be just clarified more specifically.
Absolutely. I mean, the thing is.
So there's no question about.
Says you can't do a building, if you look at the next paragraph, it says you can make a building so tall.
I mean, your farm building can be twenty by twenty, fourteen feet high. That's why I asked about the, I did read the entire copious thing, and tried, tried to do something that was within the bounds and simple and not intrusive.
Let me ask you three this, if, if we were to approve this, what makes this any different than twenty-five people that might be here a month from now, including you, Mr. Fred? It says, you know what, always want to have a shed in the green space, and it looks like it's okay to do now. Is there anything unique about this situation?
Only thing I can say, as far as the green space was assigned, that area right in there should have been assigned to the green space. When the building starts selling those lots off, they're saying that they're ready for green space, and they were coming off, and they said, well, we can't let's green space, let's green space.
I would agree with that originally, that why was it ever designated to begin with?
In other words, it should be another lot.
Right.
They went on in there because of the fact, do they?
Yeah, I would totally agree with that.
So that, in your eyes, you're saying that that's a unique situation at, at Joywood?
Let me, you know, to answer your question, Lynn, I'd love to have a shed back in my backyard, and back in the Greenbelt would be the best place to put it, because it's reasonably, you know, it's reasonably flat in places, but, you know, I could also put it up in the, the rest of the backyard, or just not do it. You know, what's to stop a whole army from coming through, I guess going through this process would be a start. You know, I do see a little bit of uniqueness, considerable amount of uniqueness in this case, because of this lot, the fact that their driveway, which is also a non-conforming use, has been there since the place was built, so.
I mean, that's one of the struggles for me with this is, is there were a bunch of things that happened probably way before two thousand and thirteen that complicates this.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying, here is the sense that basically, it's, it's there, it's been there, and nothing was ever said about it.
Yeah.
Other things was done and nothing was ever said about it, by, quote, the pusher.
Right.
Until they come in the lot.
If I could, I think there is a uniqueness aspect to your estimate on uniqueness, in that we don't have any other level ground.
Right.
Most of the other lots that back up to the Greenbelt are going to have some level place where you could put a shed, that's three feet from their neighbor.
Now, I, I can't, that's a totally different thing, and level ground, I, I don't have a lot of patience with that, there's a bobcat you can get, people can grade it, you can do it on poles.
We have a drainage easement.
Well, you couldn't put it there.
That creek.
Okay, but I'm saying, a lot of people don't have level lots, and they can't use that.
But the only thing that's left is our front yard.
A lot of people don't have, have acres.
There's no more ground, that, we've got a gigantic front yard, you know, huge wide. There's no other level ground that's big enough to set it on, and set back from the neighbor's line, that doesn't have a, you know, I don't mean like a, I wish I had another cement block here, I mean like it's six, eight, ten feet deep, you know, there just isn't another place.
Also, the villain make a wine cellar back there.
Yeah, we'd love to, our original plans were, you know, were to put in a, a basement with a storm cellar, we have no place to go but in tornadoes. This is scariest thing about living there, as the tree.
Except, except the garages, they're wonderful people.
Oh, they are.
That's where I would go.
Dottie told us we could break down her door if she wasn't home and get in her basement.
She'll probably get good keys.
But, you know, it's, we're trying to, we're trying to fit in this space, and it's, it's just the issue of, we've got the creek, we've got the trees that fall all the time, we got, you know, we just need a little shed.
Was your interpretation of the agricultural building the same as by the way we, we read it?
That you could put it, that if you farmed it, you could put an agricultural building in the Greenbelt. That you could put it, that if you farmed it, you could put an agricultural building in the Green Hill.
It, it does make allowance for a-
Twenty by twenty by fourteen.
I would be willing to make, to build a twenty by twenty there to comply with the ordinance.
Where are you getting the twenty by twenty? Because I don't-
The agricultural building.
It's in the, well, is that what you're saying?
Where, what's that?
That's what I'm, I'm saying. Is that what you're seeing it? Where is the?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Okay, so I did not read my-
I don't know what page it's on, but that's what it said, that's what it said to us.
It's nothing about Green Hill District in this code. I mean, the entire, Yvonne read the entire section about the Green Hill District.
There is a section that says in the Green Hill District, no building shall be erected or altered to exceed twenty-five feet or one story in height. Unoccupied towers are accepted, but I didn't see any language regarding agricultural structures.
Maybe it was on the old one. It was definitely in there.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't the old, because that's the same section from the old code, actually. That, that did not change.
I don't know what the unoccupied towers are either.
I'm not able to-
That would be a silo.
Radio tower.
That would be a silo.
Oh, yeah.
A silo.
That's where you put your grain for your livestock.
Yeah, I know. It's the same-
I'd be willing to, to build one of those two.
Or your ten chickens, but not rooster.
Roosters are noisy.
But they're, they're really necessary for animal feed.
If you intend to propagate a species, that is absolutely correct. Or you could go down to the hatchery.
Down the hatchery.
Candle legs. They're white that way.
From my reading of Chapter sixteen, the only buildings that you could build would be bus stations or public recreational buildings. And in those cases, you could not erect anything more than one story of height, not exceed twenty-five feet.
We'll build a bus station there if you want.
I don't think it's on the table tonight.
I don't think they'd let us walk along the highway. We're really afraid someone's going to come and start stealing our equipment out of the woods. The kids have been going back in the woods and doing drugs again. And we really want to clean up as much as we can to try to cut that down. They, they act, they treat the, our, our street just like it's a public park. And they go right through those woods and go back in there and do drugs.
Well, I, I will let the police department know that. I'm not sure that it's totally rough for our discussion.
But it's part of why we're trying to make it look a little more open where we're putting the, the grass in.
Are there any more questions from the commission to say things, questions?
Is there, were there any neighbors that had any opposition or anybody here that had any opposition?
Are you asking the public to make some comments?
We're actually asking the neighbors right now.
This is a letter from one of our neighbors who put, um, and Mrs. Farrar is here.
And I believe this lady wants to-
Terry.
Sorry, I'm one of the neighbors?
No, I'm not a neighbor, but I'm a resident of Green Hills. It's concerned with the Green Hill.
Yes.
So I may speak?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Diana Kohler. The regulation, I, I appreciate that they've come to the proper channel to ask these questions. The recr, uh, the Charter and the zoning is very specific about the uses of the Green Hill. And the fact that they had a non-conforming use at one time does not mean that a non-conforming use would be permitted now. The Green Hill in, in the Village of Green Hills is rather sacred and it is very protected by our Charter. And we've gone to court several times to prevent or attempt to prevent any building or any destruction of our Green Hill. It's gone all the way to Supreme Court. I'm opposed personally to any construction or demolition or anything inside of our Green Hill. If this does pass, what is the residence of Green Hill's recourse? Being that it is protected Green Hill that we're discussing tonight. It's not really a matter of just if the neighbors care. This is a very important part of our community and one that we're very proud of, especially when you look at our other sister cities. Also, I had a question regarding the pre-meeting meeting that went on with the quorum of this commission in the mayor's office. Yes, there were three people plus Mr. Dries came in at the last minute, and I was in the hall and heard the pre-meeting meeting. So that was an illegal meeting of this commission, not in public regarding this matter, and I'm very concerned about that. I did hear the discussion. I was in the hallway. Mr. Dries saw me.
Let me, let me clear up-
Yes, please.
A couple of things about what was being discussed. Mr. Noble was just announcing the fact that there were a number of other non-compliant structures within the Green Hill around-
That is a discussion that should have taken place in public. I heard the dis-
You said it here a few minutes ago.
No, I heard the discussion that went on in the back room. And I heard Ms. Kovak explaining things that Connie went and looked at. These are all discussions that should have happened here in public and they took place behind closed doors.
No, the door was open, by the way. You read everything, so.
There was absolutely- This is supposed to be done in public. Being that it was not a public meeting makes it illegal.
Well, let me explain to you. There was no planned public, no planned meeting for the mayor's office. There was no closed door to the mayor's office.
There was a meeting that took place.
Some questions asked about clarity about a few things which I, I asked. That was it. There was nothing said in that room that any of us, or I certainly would not say right now and that we haven't already said. Everything that was said has been expressed here.
You had a quorum of planning commission in a meeting that was not open to the public. It was not a public meeting discussing this particular variance. I overheard the conversation.
And that's-
That makes that proceeding illegal.
There, there was no proceeding in there to be discussed. There was a few people having to discuss.
That's, that's an hour. We don't need to discuss that anymore.
There was nothing said in there that wouldn't have been said out here or that wasn't said out here. Does anybody else have a comment?
Here it does.
Terry.
I just walked in a few minutes before the meeting, so I have nothing.
First of all, I just would like a little clarification why this particular case is being heard in front of the planning commission. On the application, it states that this is a site plan review and it says to refer to Section twenty-two point six of our zoning code. And when I look at that, and it discusses under twenty-two point six A, when a site should be done by this commission. And it says, the section shall apply to new property development, this is not that, and any collective substantial expansion of existing structures. That is not this, except for individual single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings from parking lots of five spaces or smaller. Now, this particular project does not fall under anything that you guys are supposed to be reviewing for a site plan. Is there something else that, some other law on the code that we should be aware of?
I can address that. It is specifically because it's Green Hill property. We refer to Section sixteen, Chapter sixteen regarding Green Hill.
And what is the specific? Can you read that?
I sure can. In a Green Hill District, this is sixteen point two. In a Green Hill District, buildings shall be used, no building or other structure shall be erected or altered to be used or permitted uses. Except if your plans to propose to use building or other structure and the location thereof have been submitted to the planning commission for their recognition. And it is very used.
And that is for allowable structures.
That, that's for any, it involves the Green Hill District.
And is that for allowable uses in structures or is that for, what is this? This is actually, they are requesting a variance of the zoning law. That would be.
Yeah, I understand.
So why are we not-
Because we, that's the point I tried to make. We have no ability to, according to our guidelines and the rules that are in place, we do not have, I, I don't see how we can.
You should be in front of this, this should be in front of the zoning board of appeals.
I, I understand that question.
Apparently we have legal, a legal opinion that this was the place for this decision to be made.
I asked the same question, Terry, when I made the application, because I read it and it clearly said that these single-family dwellings don't apply. Right. But this isn't a single-family dwelling. It's a Green Hill lot.
And the Green Hill lots, there's a clear definition for what is and isn't allowed.
Correct. And if it's an allowable use, such as, okay, an example would be the new visitor center at the campground over at Linton Woods. That is on village, in village corporation. It is in the Green Hill. And it was an allowable use because it is a public recreational facility. So yes, that would, should go in front of the planning commission for approval, comment, comment of the public as to what they think of the plan.
That is right.
But this is not that. This is not an approved use. This is going outside of what the zoning requirements are for that district.
It really shouldn't have ended up here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we should do that.
There's no reason.
I've been saying legal counsel is sent here.
I don't necessarily-
I think legal counsel needs to look at it once again and look at it. I feel for you.
Mother of God.
I, I do believe it's a zoning appeal situation because I think you're-
What difference does it?
Well, the planning commission can only make recommendations that would go to counsel for approval. So you cannot get approval here tonight for what you're requesting.
But we can't get a decision.
Correct. I mean, they can say, yeah, we think it's wonderful, send it to counsel for review. But counsel would have to change the zoning laws for that district in order for you to be able to move forward. And that's something I think where we're at is we have a unique situation where we have Green Hill that is owned by private residents.
It is.
And either we're going to say, no, I'm sorry, you cannot do anything with that land. Or we're going to look at our Green Hill regulations and say, yes, there is a difference between publicly held Green Hill and privately residentially held Green Hill. And we need to change our laws to, to allow for some, some use.
Thanks, Terry. At this point, given the questions that have been raised and as I read sixteen point two, you know, it does say, these come to planning commission for things about permitted uses. This is from permitted use.
Exactly.
I would move that we table this question till our next meeting. And have a written legal opinion rendered to see what's the right process, just to make sure we go through the right process. Okay?
I would agree.
I'll second that motion.
I would second. Okay. All right.
Call the question.
Okay, and we're going to move to Paul.
Judith, Judith, you've got to actually ask her to vote.
Okay, okay, let's go vote on this. Okay, Yvonne?
No, she's not a member of the commission.
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
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 Eventually we will have to continue with the process.
Who do we see about the damages for the money we're going to lose for not building the shed? We've paid for the shed already and, and they're not going to hold it any longer. We have a hold on for this meeting.
Do you want to comment? I think that, that is a silly thing to bring up and I would not address some kind of question.
It's not your money.
That's because it's not your money.
You should spend your money until you know if something's going to be allowed or not.
You can't find out in this village, you know? In a reasonable amount of time, you can't get an answer.
We've tried to get an answer for four years.
Four years you've been working on this?
Yes, four years.
Four years.
I, I don't understand that.
Neither do we.
And, and I feel for your situation.
I'm sure you do.
I, I do. On a personal level, I absolutely do.
Can you tell me?
I don't agree with the way anything has been handled.
Can you tell me how can we address the fact that our house is illegal?
Exactly.
How do we address that?
I don't know.
Are you going to shut it down because it's illegal?
Somebody should have made some changes back in nineteen sixty. That's all I can tell you. I don't know.
Yeah.
And the driveway shouldn't have been put in and, and the extended driveways and the drive, the big pad. I mean, I, I don't know how this was allowed to happen and stay there.
But, but you do know there are lots and lots and lots and lots of non-conforming Green Hill issues like this.
I'm not questioning that one. One that, that doesn't make it right. We need to go back and make changes in, in our guidelines.
Can you tell me how come there's a half acre of Green Hill against a, oh, a sixteen hundred acre Green Hill? Is it a Green Trust then or something like that? It's, I just don't understand why of all this land with trees on it, thirty-two acres?
And I think that's-
My half acre, I'm not allowed to do anything with it.
My, my opinion is that it does need to go back to the zoning law and I would ask to change the zoning on that particular lot.
And is that who we asked?
Absolutely.
Let's get, let's get a legal opinion.
Let's get a legal opinion first before we start trying to offer advice where we don't have the answer.
What I would do if I were presenting it. Okay, are we, is there any other questions or anything else that we need to address here this evening?
No.
Okay. I moved that the meeting be adjoint at school.
Judith, we've got a piece of business that we need to attend to and-
That is true.
Regarding that, with the loss of the same, we've lost one of our appointed members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I would not make Mr. Dries to fill that role.
I'd be happy to do it if someone seconds it.
I'll second the motion.
Planning commission has to have one person on each of them.
Two.
Two.
Two. It's Wes.
Wes or Jason? Jason's gone.
Do we know about the appointments, do we really point this? And they were, who was it? I'm sure it was Wes. What? Judith, not Jason, is she?
Jason was, that's why I'm going to say I double two.
Now there are two. Wes was. Judith thinks she was too.
All right, that's table after the next meeting.
It's a table. This is out of control.
He should be brought up. Well, that's to the point. It's, I'm not nominating either of the people that is, might not be.
Okay, since there's some confusion here.
Let's just, let's, let's-
Let's scratch that.
Let's just table, table that motion. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion. Okay, it's eight fifty. Okay, we need to adjourn.
I have a question. Where, how do we apply it to the zoning commission or will you submit this to the zoning commission? Who is the zoning commission? Where are they?
The Board of Zoning Appeals is a separate group and the manager can give you details about how to apply the Board of Zoning Appeals. I would, I would hold off on anything until we get a written opinion from the water director as to what we need.
We will ask him to execute like that.
How, how long until it's up, Terry?
I would think we'd get that within a week.
Certainly within, I would suspect within a week if he's here.
We're on holiday.
You're talking about the insurance again?
Yes.